Great. Good afternoon, everyone. We are so happy to have you for a specially timed three o'clock in the afternoon open session. I will see if there is anyone here to provide public comment? I don't believe we, okay, we don't, so we don't have anybody here to provide public comment? In which case, we will jump right in because we have a definite amount of time to work with. So, in that case, I will hand it over to Mr. Moskowitz.
Thank you, President Kirkhead. Yeah, very excited to be here today. We always love it when our staff are with us because, like our students, our staff are the ones we really want to hear from. So this is an exciting day. I'm really just starting the kickoff here and I'll hand it off to some other staff. But before we get started, I really want to appreciate and send appreciation to Dr. Madrigal and her team. Anytime we're talking about looking at data, whether it's quantitative, qualitative, Dr. Madrigal and her team really do a great job in getting us prepared. So I appreciate that. So you all will recall, if we can go to the Board of Education Goals slide, what I'm going to say for these first few minutes are not new to anyone in this room, but of course, we have people watching at home that may not be as familiar with the concept of the board goals. And so, as you all know, in October, November of 2023, just over a year ago, you all adopted these Board of Education Goals and guardrails. And we've been working to address and support and ensure that we're achieving those goals. And then in August of this last year, in 2024, you all approved this year's progress monitoring calendar. And that's what we've been working from. That progress monitoring calendar is really identifying when will data become available, especially our student outcome data. When will it become available in the year? And as soon as possible after that data is available, we want to bring that to you. And so, in October, November, you had an opportunity to get an update on student outcome goals related to Board Goals 1 and 2. We were looking at the iReady data and Diagnostic 1. And that really gave us just an understanding of how we were, in a very early stage, making progress towards Board Goals 1 and 2. You'll also recall as part of that progress monitoring calendar that you all approved, we're not just looking at quantitative data this year. We also want to have opportunities to look at qualitative data, voices from the field, because we think that that really rounds out the understanding of what it means to be thinking about outcomes, outputs, and data. In addition, in October, at the October workshop, you all recall, we were sitting on the other side of the room. And we were talking about the coherence, in particular at that moment, the coherence between the work in OCIPD, the level offices, and our research office. And so, if OCIPD is really taking the lead in supporting our teachers through quality professional development, through developing units of instruction aligned to our content standards and aligned to our curriculum, our level offices are working with our principals then to think about what would that implementation look like? At the site level, with all the needs going on at sites, what does it look like to implement the instructional vision as supported through OCIPD? But what does that look like in supporting our principals through the level offices to see that implementation? And then, of course, the great work in the research office is to make sure that we're monitoring that throughout the year, to see if are those adult actions that we're engaged in having the intended student outcomes that we would like to see. So while we looked at the quantitative data in November related to Board Goals 1 and 2, today is really an opportunity to look at the qualitative data related to Board Goals 1 and 2, and really thinking about what are schools doing, particularly schools that are getting some significantly positive results? What are they doing differently in their adult actions that are allowing them to get the results that they're getting for their students? And how might we learn from that as a system? So you all have a really critical role to play. We all do collectively, and that's why we're sitting all kind of interspersed. Throughout the tables here, you have the set of the Board of Education Student Outcome Monitoring Inquiry Questions. They're just kind of spread out. There are going to be opportunities today, this afternoon, for us all collectively to talk with one another and maybe ask some questions of our awesome staff who are here to share with us today. So just wanted to provide a brief overview. I'm excited to sit back and participate alongside all of you. And we're going to get us started, actually. I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Samuels to introduce the first school team.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have the pleasure of introducing you to two great leaders at Hughes Middle School. We have our principal, Pilar Perosio, and with her is our sixth grade education specialist, Isis Blanchett Marsalan. And they are, they're going to, they're going to share their story. And they're going to have an opportunity to talk a little bit about what they're doing, how they're achieving those results. And one thing about Hughes that's important to note is that Hughes is our largest middle school in our district. And a little side note, I had the privilege and honor to serve as a principal at Hughes for about four years. So I, it has a special place in my heart. Hughes is also one of our most diverse middle schools. It represents all the great things about Long Beach because we have a multitude of students from every pocket, every background that's at Hughes Middle School. Currently, Hughes has about 1,200 students. Seventeen percent are black students. Nearly 49% are Hispanic students, and we have about 8% or so that are multilingual learners. And that's just to give you a little taste of what we have at Hughes. But we have students from high socioeconomic backgrounds. We have students from low socioeconomic backgrounds. And so, if you, if you look at what's at all of our schools, some schools may have concentrations of a group at their site. Hughes have, has them all. And so, just, just excited that they're going to be able to share their story about what they're able to do. And hopefully, we'll be able to see that, that they're making a difference and we can learn from them. So without further ado, I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Madrigal.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels, for setting the context for our presentation. When we last met, we had an opportunity in November at our board meeting to review our student outcomes data in regards to Diagnostic 1, iReady, and supporting our Board Goal 1 and 2. So what you have in front of you or on the slide is just capturing the positive outlier data that we identified for Hughes. And we're not going to spend too much time on the quantitative data because we did that in November. And so, for today, it's really being able to talk about what is qualitative data? And also, looking beyond the number, we've been, we've been sharing that with our community. We've been talking about how do we tell the story that goes beyond just this data set? But we want to make sure that we identify, like, what was it about the iReady data that we said, this is good, positive outlier data? So what you see is that in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we did see an increase in the percentage of students that were early on to mid or above grade level. And we also saw that there was a decrease in the number of, or the percentage of students that were three grade levels or below this year compared to last year. So those two data sets are not necessarily related. So I just want to say that they're, they stand on their own. So we're looking at two very different things. So we're proud of this positive outlier data that we were able to identify. And just like with Hughes, we're going to have an opportunity to also look at our other school that is here today, Holmes. And we will also share that, their data points as it pertains to iReady. So with that being said, let's talk a little bit about qualitative data. So let's define it first. So qualitative data in a very simple form is really data that's going to help us to understand the context. We're also going to be able to further explore those lived experiences as well as those practices that when you look at a number, the number doesn't tell you that, which then provides us additional insights. Every school is unique. Every lived experience is different. And so, our goal today is to engage in a roundtable discussion around those lived experiences. We want to be able to talk about things that have worked well as well as those things that we're still trying to learn from and those things that continue to be, not necessarily a challenge, but that we need further investigating. But we also want to acknowledge that in order for this to happen today, we actually, the research team who is here today, so thank you for being here and all the work that you do to support our district and to support me in the work, we spent time in listening sessions with both schools. We had an opportunity to really engage them in a conversation that has to do with their story. So we're going to give you the summarized version, and hopefully, in our discussion, we're able to uplift some of the lived experiences that we heard. But with qualitative data, you always want to make sure that you find themes. And so, what you're seeing are the three themes that for both schools, although their practices and their journey is different, we were able to see that the theme, that these three themes are very much integrated in their work, both for the elementary school as well as the middle school. So we have facilitating adult learning and development, collaboration, and also culturally responsive leadership. So these were our themes. So as today, you're going to, I'm going to ask that everyone here and those that are watching, as you lean in and listen to their story, think of these three themes and how they show up in the responses. Might be slightly different, but you're going to be able to see and hear evidence of these three themes. So let's begin our discussion, and we're going to just set the tone that because this is a roundtable discussion, we want to make sure that it is that. And so, I'm going to ask permission, if I can call you by your first name. I know in a school setting, we always use people's last names, but we want this to be an authentic experience. So Isis Bilad, thank you for joining us today. And we want to start with our first question around collaboration. So collaboration plays a role in the successful implementation of professional development. So we want to hear from both or either of you to talk about those either structures or practices and perhaps examples of your PDSA cycle that have influenced your team and your approach to literacy.
Okay. Is this good? Can you guys hear me? Okay. So I would say some notes that I took. So we, last year was my first year at Hughes, and so I got to meet this fabulous teacher, and I will say I have a really awesome team. So it was all about that, providing structures, right? So I would say structures, accountability. So we started with just building our team. So we started with that, looking at PDSA cycles, starting to look at data. And then we've gotten, as time has moved forward, we've gotten better at, like, okay, so we, are we looking at the right data? And really, just moving forward with including student voice, including parents, and trying to really pinpoint, like, where we need to go next. And so, that's something that has definitely worked with us. We wanted to really, well, this year, we decided to start with literacy because it's something that is important. It's not only a board goal, but it's something that supports our entire campus. And so, that was something that came, surfaced last year when we started meeting. And so, that's something that we do across our site. And so, we're definitely seeing some positive gains that way. And we're really tackling it in all angles. One thing that we have helped, that has helped us is looking at student work. So that's something initially looking at just maybe quantitative data, but now, then we moved into, okay, so let's look at student work. Not just student voice, but what are students actually producing? And let's calibrate. And so, really, this idea of, I mean, we're still in process, right? It's a constant thing that we're doing, but our teachers do a really great job, and so do our students. But we, you know, really trying to be authentic and looking at what do we see in front of us? Where do we need to go next?
And I'll add to that. So from a teacher's perspective, I feel like at Hughes, we've had a lot of opportunities to collaborate together. So not just staff meetings, we have specialized meetings for literacy where multiple departments meet, and we agree upon literacy directives and ways in which we want to all do the same thing with our students. So in those spaces, we're able to share together, like, what's working in your classroom? Is that something that we can bring, you know, into history class as well? I know I'm in between ELA and history, so one of the awesome things that I've been able to do is to take some of the strategies that we're using with students in ELA and direct them into history as well. I feel like collaborating together is one of the highlights of Hughes, particularly when it comes to reviewing student outcomes and, like, really creating those equitable lessons where we're able to reach our diverse learners.
I'll also say too, OCIPD has been great. We have amazing coaches. So we really tap into our resources. So not only just on our site, we've got a lot of knowledge on the team, but also OCIPD. I mean, they're constantly, you know, available to Zoom or to come to our site. They come to after-school staff meetings. So that's been really helpful too, leveraging their knowledge and then what we have going on. So that's been really helpful.
Thank you both for sharing that. And something that I was thinking about as you were both sharing your story, I thought about when we met and we were learning about the practices, something that resonated with our team was this, you know, pride and approach to the implementation of the collaborative co-teaching model. I know Isis, you, you lit up when we talked about that, and our team had a lot of curiosity around it. And perhaps folks that are watching, that are not necessarily at a school site, may have the same curiosity that our staff did. So I would love for you to share today what that experience has been. And, you know, in the previous question, I did say the PDSA cycle. So I'm wondering, like, when we're talking about PDSA cycle, the plan-do-study act model, how do you also incorporate that into co-teaching? Because that's something that we, we talk about when we do in Gen Ed. And then when we talk about, like, you know, how do you bring those practices into other spaces? I want to hear more about that.
So this year was a really big year at Hughes because we expanded our inclusion model to include students who had previously been in special day classes. And there was some hesitation. There were some worries about the challenges that that may present. The first thing that I would say is that I feel I am really proud of the Hughes team and, you know, Mrs. Perosio for really pushing us in that direction, even though that there was some pushback. I feel like as a district, a lot of our work is in creating those equitable learning opportunities for all students, regardless of their learning styles. And it's definitely taking, taking place at Hughes. I feel like one of the main things that I'd like to highlight about our inclusion classrooms is that the students truly feel like they belong. There's a very high sense of belonging, a very high sense of peers helping one another, collaborating together. And it's a space where, like, hey, I might not be the best writer, but I'm still able to share my, my assets and my skills with my team. I may be really good at speaking or drawing or expressing my ideas in other ways. So it's really awesome to see the students come together in that space and being able to highlight their different assets and what they bring to their team. As far as co-teaching, I feel like the main thing that I feel is really obvious for my co-teacher and I is that we get along very well. And I don't want to say that that's mandatory for co-teaching, but, but it definitely helps. But Mr. Richard and I, we have been very intentional about what we want our outcomes in our classroom to be. And at the form, first and foremost, we want all of our students to really be involved in the lessons. So whether that means, like, spending extra time creating those scaffolds, spending extra time going over what students have already produced and asking, what can we do differently? What can we do better? How are we differentiating these lessons to increase that access to the general education curriculum? So far, we've had a lot of success. There has been, you know, some learning curves. Both my co-teacher and I have had to really pull from our personal strengths and recognize the strengths in each other and, you know, bring, bring it every day. I feel like one of the ways that co-teaching is really beneficial for students is that they have both of those teachers and they're supporting them. So my co-teacher and I, we, we trade roles very frequently. Sometimes I'm leading the class, sometimes he is. But we both are very intentional about what we call being on the floor. So when you walk into our classroom, you'll see both of us in the field, working one-on-one in small groups with students. So we're presenting all of the rigor and the Gen Ed content, but at the same time, we're providing those one-on-one experiences with the students. And I feel like, you know, they love being there, and it really teaches our students to accept, accept all, to be those equity and inclusion leaders that we plan for them to be with our student portrait. And yeah, I feel, I feel like my bottom line with inclusion is that it works. And it works because of the intention behind it, really, really creating the opportunities for students to show their learning in different ways, work with their peers, and, you know, be okay with accepting help and, you know, working together and being in the small group with, with one of the teachers. I will say that we have been really good about having heterogeneous groups, so making sure that at all times, students of all different learning styles are together and not making feel, anyone feel alienated or singled out. I feel like that's been a highlight of our teaching practice. But yeah, a lot of room for reflecting, working together. We spend our conference periods together. We're together after school, and we're always picking each other's brains on how we can best serve our students.
Which kind of leads us, thank you for sharing that because it leads us to our next section, which is around collaboration. And you talked about really, in what you've shared, relationship building and the importance of that. And we identified community of learners, so I wanted to find it so that we have a common definition as community. When we refer to community of learners in this presentation, we're, we're really referring to students, staff, and caregivers. And so, when we talk about building those relationships, part of the, building the relationships is also having open communication. And you talked about, you know, being able to work collaboratively. Now, how do you foster a culture where feedback and open communication flows freely between the community of learners, so staff, students, and your caregivers, those that live in the community? Can you speak to ways in which you foster that culture?
Yes. I think having a very strong sense of, sense of belonging in a learning community is very important. It starts with the relationships that teachers build with the students. I would say that in the co-teaching space, the students are, they seem really happy to have two teachers in the room. We always greet the students together. We start class together. And as for the students, we have, I spoke earlier about how we have everyone, like, mixed into the class. And so, you're sitting next to someone that you may have not been sitting next to last school year. And I would say at the beginning of the school year, there were a few moments where students had to really address their own personal biases and get, you know, understand that, hey, you know, we all belong in this room, not just people who learn like me. I feel like what has really fostered our sense of belonging in our classroom is all of the group work and collaboration that we do. We, whenever we do, well, we do whole group guided practices pretty much daily. But when we have students break off in their teams, each team gets to assign a member a role. And the roles are all based on student assets. So everyone plays a part in, you know, the learning experience and producing the work. I would also say that giving those students that time to talk to one another and to ask questions and to not be shy. One of the things that I really love seeing in the classroom is when students are helping each other. So I have a student who, from time to time, may, you know, start thinking about other things. You know, they might start to disengage a bit. And instead of, like, just ignoring that student, the people in their team will be like, oh, hey, like, we're on this page now. Or, hey, like, check out what I wrote. Or like, what do you think about, what do you think about the theme of Hachiko? And now they're talking about why Kentaro was spending so much time at the train station in Hachiko. Then, you know, the other peer is like, oh, yeah, like, I know about that. I could talk about this. So not having everything so, for lack of a better word, sterile. Like, being able to be flexible in the classroom and have students present their learning in different ways and having the other students around knowing that that's okay. I will say, we do differentiate a lot of our lessons. However, one thing that we're noticing is that the students kind of still want to all do the same thing. So when we provide, like, scaffolds or differentiated papers, they'll, like, look down and they'll look to their partner. They look to the other person's team, like, okay, I want my table to look just like theirs. So it's like, okay. And being able to still, like, work with the students, even if they don't want to use that scaffold. They want to be just like their peer. And I think that's great because it's introducing them to that rigor that they deserve to receive as well.
Okay, I'm going to jump in and just say, also, I think another thing that is very helpful. I think with data, it's something that, being transparent with data is important for many reasons. But students, I mean, I, I mean, I feel like I could go on and on about this. Like, students, they want to do well. We have amazing kids. They want to do well. And so, I think that when you teach them to set goals, we talk to the kids about, like, you know, here, you know, if it's a student with special, you know, that has an IEP, then here is, here are the IEP goals. What are we working toward? And they like seeing the progress, right? They like measuring that progress and saying, like, oh, yeah, I was, you know, this was my goal and I made that goal. Or even if they didn't, I didn't quite make the goal. Okay, so how are we going to monitor and adjust? So kids like it. Parents like it. I think sometimes it's being vulnerable with data because sometimes it's hard. Sometimes we don't like what we see. We ask for, you know, we might survey different, you know, we have different types of data. We have survey data. We've got the, of course, the quantitative data that we get from assessments. And sometimes we're not totally happy with what we see, but that's an opportunity. It's always an opportunity to, like, okay, what can we do differently? And so, I think that in terms of fostering that culture where feedback and communication flow freely starts with that. Starts with the vulnerability of, like, okay, let's, where are we to start with? This is where we are, and then where are we going? And to just keep coming back to it. I think it creates, for students, we have a really good sense of scholarliness, and the kids are excited. We reward the kids for their efforts and for their, you know, they want to shine. And so, you know, anyway, I don't know if that helps, but I think that that's, I wanted to add that because there is a lot of sense of celebration too that continues to grow.
Absolutely. And that is part of your, your story. And, and as I mentioned at the beginning, every school is going to have a different experience and their story evolves and changes. And something that you called out, which is part of being a culturally responsive leader, is using data to inform your practices. I heard collaboration across, you know, whether it's Isis with her counterpart, her co-teacher. But there's also another aspect about being a culturally responsive leader. And when we had an opportunity to, to meet, you talked about your leadership journey, which to not acknowledge that, the experiences of a leader and your own learning on this journey that you're on, and how that informs how you do things differently at every school that you are at, that's, you know, that's part of being a culturally responsive leader, and that is part of this story. So what could you tell us about your own journey and how your journey and your experiences have helped you when you're thinking about that data decisions and bringing teams together for collaboration, deciding on this professional development versus this other because of what you've learned? Can you tell us a little bit about your journey and how that impacts you?
Sure. So in talking with Dr. Madrigal, I was sharing, I remember 15 years ago, first becoming a principal, and you start off and you're so excited, and you've, you know, you've taken all the classes. You've done all the things. You've read all the books. And so, you, you jump into the job and you're like, I've got this. I know what I'm doing. And so, for me, my, my very first assignment was, I was fortunate that it was a really good match, that a lot of my strengths just happened to fit with the needs of my site at the time. And so, it was great. There was a lot of success. We had a great momentum. Our data was wonderful. And that, that carried forward for several years. And then I got to my next school. And so, when I got to my second school, I was like, oh, I've got this, right? Like, this is, I, I know what to do. I've read all the books. I now have, like, you know, seven years behind me. Like, I know what I'm doing. And then I fell flat on my face. And so, it was a really good learning opportunity for me to see that just because you have experience and just because at one site, things were great and you had this team. And, you know, it doesn't mean that you don't have to start back at square one and just really see and pay attention, different community, different, you know, different team. And so, that first year was tough. It was a lot of swallowing, like, pride and just saying, like, oh, wait, okay, I have a lot to learn. And so, you know, going slow and stepping back and learning. And so, site three, now at the third site, I was like, okay, now I, I got, I, I get it. You got to start, like, paying attention, you know, really listening. So I feel like I definitely learned. I'm still learning all the time. I still, you know, you get excited in this role. We get to work with kids every day, so it's really fun. And seeing positive growth is, of course, wonderful, and we have lots of things to celebrate. And then, but we have our days, and I'm like, oh, I thought, I thought we were here. And now I'm having to take a step back. I, you know, I missed. And now I'm having to take a step back, I, you know, I missed up over here. So it happens and it's constant, it's, it's the real, like, you know, kids will tell you, teachers, like you missed up in my job and it's very evident. It's like right in your face, like, okay. It's a constant, like you got to be real with yourself and a lot of self-reflection. So, yeah, so I think that that's definitely, I've learned to just, and I, what I'm loving in this current position is I'm also, I really love the community that I work in. That's something that I've also, I feel like I've added to my repertoire. Like, you know, initially it was like really about the sites. And also over time, things change in the world. And we're, you know, we learn and we grow and things that happen for me professionally as well. I've learned to tap into more of my community resources and, and just the parent group. So that's something that I'm excited because it's something that is newer for me. And just continue to grow and learn.
Thank you for being vulnerable and sharing your story. And, and we talk about humanizing the data, but we also need to humanize the role of the principal, which is changing and, you know, it changes with what we are faced as leaders. And I think to have that honest, you know, just to provide like an insight on, you know, your own journey is important. It really speaks to, one, what you do as a leader, which is you do a lot of reflection. And the reflections then are going to help with, you know, thinking about things and looking about, looking at things very differently. So thank you for, for being vulnerable and sharing that with us. As we're closing out our section or our, our time with Hughes, there is, you know, I want to connect just this work that we're doing with uplifting voices and those closest to the work to our Vision 2035. And we have our portraits. And when we think about our graduate, our, our system, as well as the adult portrait, we want to think about like those aspirations that we have for our system, our adults and our students. So the question I want to end with is, you know, what are you most, there's two. So what are you most proud of at Hughes? And then also, what are your aspirations for your Hughes community?
So this question was interesting because I had a chance to sit with Isis and we, you know, looked at the question together. And so initially it was like, okay, am I going to tell you, are you going to tell me? Like what our thoughts were, right? We're like, all right, let's write it down. And so then, you know, sort of like a reveal. And so we both actually had the exact same thing, which we thought was interesting. How long have you been at Hughes, four years?
This is my fourth year.
Fourth years, and so this is my second year. So it's not that we have been there for, you know, 15 years. But we've both had the same experience. We feel at Hughes, there's like this real sense of legacy, right? Like, and, and talking about the community, there's just this very strong sense of legacy there at Hughes. We meet people all the time. I went to Hughes, my mom went to Hughes, my, you know, my grandparents went to Hughes. Like this just real, the community, I have been invited to attend events and they, they just really want to be a part of the school. They love Hughes, the teachers feel really passionate and strong about being a Hughes teacher. So I think that's definitely something that we feel, yeah. We, we feel passionate about wanting to make a difference and continue to grow what that legacy is. So I think that this year we're focused a lot on rigor and relevance. And we're really trying to hear student voices, try to hear more from parents, inviting parents to come in and talk to teachers, come in, see classrooms. And so I think that that is something that, you know, looking at the student work reflected in that and specifically rigor and relevance. And we want to include all students, we're very, we're loving our all inclusion and we want to just continue that work. Yeah?
Yeah, I would love to jump in and say, the Hughes school spirit is alive and well. And I feel like that has a direct influence on our academic outcomes. There's so many different resources that are available to the students. And I feel like that is what our team is the most proud of. Just how dynamic of a place it is to be, no matter like who you are, what you're into. Like there is, there's a club, there's a teacher, there's peers that will match you in your interests. I would also say that as far as our aspirations at Hughes, it would be to continue, to continue having that school spirit and to be a place where diversity is celebrated. I, one of the things that I love about Hughes is that, you know, that all-inclusive, really culturally rich environment. And I feel like the students appreciate it. I feel like all of the students feel like they're represented and they're seen. And if they don't feel represented or seen, they have avenues where they can express themselves. And, you know, us as a school team and staff, we could fix that. Because we definitely want all of our students to have a really strong sense of belonging. And I feel like that, that strong sense of belonging, like I'm, I'm a learner here, I'm valued here. I feel like that is a, a direct testament to the increase in scores and our academic outcomes. Yeah.
On a fun note, we just won the basketball championship, we were number one. And, but what I was telling the students is that, you know, we had, there's a picture and it's, you look into the audience and of course, parents are there, parents are always there supporting their children. But there were also tons of staff, right? Staff that are giving up their Saturday and not just teachers, teachers, office staff, support staff. It's really like, we care a lot about the kids and I think they know that we do.
Well, thank you both for joining us today. I wish we had more time to continue the conversation. But I do want to give an opportunity to the team that is here today to be able to ask questions that they may have. So thank you both.
So don't leave yet. So what I'm going to ask the team, and we're, again, we're kind of interspersed. You all kind of around the table, we have this set of questions. So if I can get kind of a couple of senior team members and board members, take a look at the questions. Board members, think about what would be a question or two you would want to ask of the Hughes team? And we'll probably have time for about two or three of those. And then if you don't get to ask your question of the Hughes team, you'll be first up for asking the question of the Holmes team up next. So take about two minutes, just have a conversation, senior team and board members. See if we can come up with some good questions to ask this great panel right here. All right, so finish up your last thought. Dr. Madrigal, would you like me to call on folks or, okay? Well, I, I don't want it to, I don't want this to feel totally like partial, but I am sitting next to a board member and this board member would like to ask a question. So Mr. Miller, you asked the first one and then we'll find some others as well.
No, it was really important to us to know, what was your favorite football team? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, do not answer that question. No, but on a more serious note, one of the things that I was sharing with Brian was my interest in what you spoke to earlier in regards to the chemistry that you and your other teacher have in your CCT classroom. And so when we talk about great chemistry, great teams, everybody knows from a jokingly serious sports perspective to a work relationship perspective, you have good chemistry with somebody, you often also produce a great product. But it's tricky on how you actually operationalize that. And so I say this to say, from your perspective, what do you suggest the district do to, to support some of that secret sauce that we're talking about?
Yes, the secret sauce is definitely a helpful ingredient in the inclusion space. I will say that first. As far as district supporting co-teachers, I, both my co-teacher and I have been to co-teacher training multiple times. And so that's already.
Co-teacher training?
Yes.
Give me a little bit of history on that.
Yes, so they have training specifically for co-teachers to attend together to go over co-teaching strategies and building relationship with your co-teacher.
I'm sorry to keep asking all these questions. How often do you participate in?
I believe that they're offered a few times during the school year. I know that as a team, we like to go at least once, once during the school year. Yes. But I feel like giving teachers that worked very closely together the gift of time. So at Hughes, we asked, we asked our principal like, hey, we want to spend extra time together. Can we get paid for that? And then they were like, yes. And then we look at, we're like, high five, like we get to like be together and get paid for it, yay. But giving them more time, and I, I feel like it would be really helpful to give co-teachers more examples of what successful co-teaching may look like. Now, I will say that it's different for every pair. You can't, it's not like a one size fits all, like this is exactly how it's supposed to be done. But giving, giving the teachers the time and space to develop their craft together. So my co-teacher, he was a dynamic ELA teacher. He's, he came in, he was on fire. And he had to realize like, hey, I'm going to have to be flexible this year because now I'm working with another educator and we're going to have to really put both of our strengths together to, to deliver what the children deserve. So I feel like we have had the time and the resources provided through the training and through our school site to actually utilize that time and space to actually come together and be on the same page as much as possible. I also think it would be helpful to have maybe some very basic guidelines on what co-teachers should have as intentions of working together. So not necessarily telling them what to do per se, but how to be toward one another. I feel like one of the challenges that some co-teacher, co-teaching pairs have is like, I've done it this way this entire time. And now like I have an education specialist, you know, coming in, telling me that I need to differentiate this way, scaffold this, like I present material this way. And I'm just like not that willing to do it. So if there is like some, a basic intention of like truly putting both, the best of both worlds together and having that bottom line of, you know, we're very student, student first. We want to always have our students first. So that any of the discrepancies that may come up fall to the wayside. Because it's not about us, it's about the students. And I feel like that's what made my co-teaching pair really successful is because we have all these ideas and, you know, we're both bringing like, what if, what if we use this visual? Like I made a visual, but I made a visual. It's like, well, maybe we can use both of our visuals. But at the, at the end of the day, we don't care whose visual we choose, it has to be the one that's best for the students. So having that bottom line of how are we going to get our lessons? How are we going to make them accessible to all of our learners? How are we going to provide the rigor for students who, you know, really need that extra push? And how are we going to provide those different, differentiated instruction and scaffolds for us, our learners who are still making progress toward the grade level standards? So really that baseline, like whatever you guys are doing in that classroom, make sure that your students' needs are met.
Isis, we could spend probably hours and hours asking you because I love hearing just the way that you're thinking about your work. And by the way, I know you're maybe a little jealous that Mr. Miller got to go first, but the problem is he's not going to be able to ask another question of Hughes. So he used his one question. Is there one more board member for Hugh? Considering Hughes is in your board area, Ms. Lopez, why don't you go ahead and ask your question?
Hey, Brian, you're not going to get to just cut it off at two questions. I don't think that's happening today.
But here's the thing, if we don't start at five o'clock, we don't start at five o'clock, right?
Two questions. So the first question is, who's not included? Is there anyone not included in the data? And then my second question is, what did seventh grade do? Because although we saw growth in sixth, seventh, and eighth, seventh grade doubled that growth in getting kids to meet grade level. And, and they also saw like a double, the decrease in students with three plus grades below level. So what was that secret sauce in the seventh grade?
I don't know that we could actually say. Sorry. I'm not sure that I could tell you exactly what the secret sauce was for seventh grade because the whole team is doing a lot of the same type of work. We have worked to build more collaboration. As Isis mentioned, the time, time is a huge factor, as you guys all know. And so for this school year, as an example, we have teachers on common conference periods. So the seventh grade team, they do plan together. And so this year additionally, in seventh grade, we have a literacy specialist who's teaching a section of seventh grade and supporting our ELA and our literacy across the site. So that's been very helpful. This individual comes to us from, she was in high school. So she, she knows where the students need to be for high school, right? And so that's been really definitely a benefit. She's, she's amazing and she's hardworking too, right? As you mentioned, like when you have great people, she's just a, you know, a true leader. But that's something unique to seventh grade. But it's not, you know, the eighth grade team is also collaborating, as is the sixth grade team. Perhaps they collaborate a little more, perhaps, you know. We're doing all of the same things across, so it's tricky to say.
Thank you. Talk to me, do I assume that you had a great question that you wanted to ask?
And I promise that this also may help with the next part of the presentation, right? Because I'm going to try to ask it in a way that lifts up what we're moving toward next. So first and foremost, I want to express an appreciation for, since we're on first name, Veronica and Brian for being so responsive to things that you shared with us last year. They said, you want more of this, you want more of that. This is exactly what I was hoping for in terms of getting a quantitative and qualitative sense of what's going on, all right? So we can talk aggregate district level or district wide level data all day. That's the data, right? The data is the data. But when we then, are we seeing what we want to be seeing? What, why is that? This, this is the importance. So I don't want to ever, I want you to know that when you leave here today, the value that you're providing, not just in telling the story, but we're making decisions, right? We're allocating resources, we're developing policies based on what's working and when, when you have to pivot, right? That seventh year or that 14th year. So I don't want to understate how important it is to hear directly from you and students when we have an opportunity to do that. Having said that, I want to lift up something that Veronica, you know, kind of ended with our Vision 2035. Many of us were at this convening yesterday. And one of the themes that at least I heard at the convening yesterday, strategic plan convening, was around collaboration, around including our caregivers, around inclusion. And not just through a values, all right? I'm not trying to minimize that. But when we talk about culturally sustaining, culturally affirming, culturally relevant pedagogy and practices, you, I heard several times, students teaching each other, right? The importance of the picture, the way you described, right? So this isn't just pie in the sky, like it's grounded in practices, in, in additional professional development, right? So I, I was hoping, because again, the, the powerful message that was left with me from yesterday is, parents need to be involved in this, right? Dr. Baker leaving opportunity for students at the end. Let's hear from students, right? What questions do you have? One of the students asked, how can we teach our parents, you know, the value of diversity, right? Of interacting with students? Ed, you brought up at the beginning, the context here is this is our largest middle school. And representatively, it's also one of our most diverse schools. So when we talk about diversity and equity, like it's here, right? We're seeing it in real time. So I, I was hoping that you could share a little bit more about this culture of community of learners, of community of teachers, that this isn't sort of the, that it could be an abstract thing, but that it's grounded in what you're doing at Hughes. Could you share a little bit more about that? And, and then as we. And, and then as we transition to what's going on at Homes, like, that's what we're looking for in terms of, not what's working, but what are we hoping, aspiring to see? Because we want to do more of that.
Yeah, I can start. So first, thank you for listening to us. We're happy to be here to share. This is, like, we're excited about the work we're doing, and, you know, of course, the support is needed. The first thing that I thought of when you started talking about that piece was, you know, last year was building a lot of, creating systems, right? Lots of systems, structures, those accountability measures. So one thing that we added to Hughes was this advisory class. So advisory, the intent of advisory of, it is like a homeroom, so it is time that is not necessarily the instructional time, however, it's a space where we try to uplift culture, we try to do, like, fun. We start the year off, you know, what we do, every Monday, there is a video, and so the students get to see pictures of and hear about what happened last week. Oh, you know, in this week's video, it was like, hey, celebrations for our girls track, our boys basketball, the band and orchestra concert, like, all of the events, right? Lots of, the students get to see themselves, their friends, the families, so we uplift all of those things. We do some reminders, we also go, what's happening this week? So everyone can really feel a part of what's happening. We want everyone to be included. It's something that is evolving, it's not perfect, and we're definitely, we have an advisory committee, we have parents and students on the committee, teachers on the committee, and we're constantly looking at, are we doing the right things in this time? It's, it's, it's really protected time for us. It's, so that's, we actually do some of the I-ready, we do goal setting with students, we do I-ready personalized lessons during this time, so it's a kind of a mix of, of things. And, but culture is something that we're, and, and as we do this, we've heard from groups of students. So we had a group of students, we started the year off celebrating Hispanic heritage, we've done disabilities awareness, we've done many of those things, and we've had students come and say, hey, I really want to do, so I have, you know, we have this culture, and we would like to see more of, like, our Asian culture celebrated, we, you know, we started with Hispanic heritage, you know, are we, we'd like to do the dances. So we've, we've had parents come and dance, we've, so it's something that's been really cool, and it's growing and just kind of evolving over time, but I think that's a way, we want to continue to work on that, so that all students feel seen, heard, valued, and just the community as well.
And I'll just briefly add, I feel like as a school site, we've been very intentional about increasing our cultural competency and giving students the opportunity to embrace their own individual identities. But alongside that, celebrating the individual, but celebrating the individual's place in their larger community. So it's kind of like two sides of the coin. We really want the students to feel comfortable being themselves at school, and like, I always call her principal for OCL, can't, can't help it. We do a lot of celebrating of, of different cultures and nationalities and celebrations as a whole school site, but students are able to, you know, express their individual identities as well via art projects, presentations, at our, our school assemblies, you know, we have pep rallies now. So there's a lot of opportunities to include culture and highlighting our individual, us as individuals, but us as being a part of our larger community as well. And I think with the intention of being culturally responsive, both things are necessary, and I feel like we're taking the steps at Hughes to make sure that that happens.
Yeah, and that is something we're definitely. Sorry, Brian, I know, we're, we're, we're working toward that, continuing to do that, right? So we've got a cultural competence group that's just getting off the ground and starting, so grassroots, right? Like, I just, I met Sharon yesterday, and I tapped her, said, hey, can you come? And she said yes. And so it's been some of that, attending things and saying, hey, can you share your story? We'd like to learn.
Say that again, Maria. Cultural competence groups, who, who's Sharon?
Oh, from yesterday. Sorry, from the strategic planning meeting, Dix Jackson, thank you, she was amazing.
Can y'all please join me in congratulating them and thanking them for being here today?
Thank you.
So, awesome, and I think you're going to stay and hear from the Homes team as well, right? Okay, so while they do a little bit of, we're going to do a little stage change here, I'd like for us to turn and talk to the same person you were talking with. What is your takeaway from what you heard from the Hughes team? Something you're taking away, and another question you have after hearing from them? What do you want to know more about, not today, but at some point? Takeaway and a question. All right, if you can finish up that last thought, we've got some very excited people in front of us. Ms. Reese and Ms. Jones can hardly contain themselves, so excited. All right, we're going to come on back. So I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Zaid in a quick moment, but I just want to say about this, this team right here. Many of us have been in these, these teachers' classrooms, and you'll hear more about them. They are so dynamic and so energetic and so amazing, and for some reason, they are so darn nervous right now. And I'm not sure why, because if you went in their classroom, you wouldn't pick up on that. So I'm going to hand it up to Mr. Zaid, and we're all going to give our, like, warmth and love to them so that they can calm down, because they are going to be so ready for this.
You know what? Let's start with a round of applause.
All right. Mr. Zaid.
I just want to say that it is a tremendous pleasure to introduce the Homes team with Ms. Grady, Ms. Jones, Ms. Reese. It is such an amazing opportunity for us to hear directly from them on today. Right before I go into the demographics, I just want to share that Homes Elementary School is actually named after Oliver Wendell Holmes, who was a Supreme Court Justice who served for 30 years. I bring him up because he was not only born in Boston, but both of his parents were abolitionists. He was known as a Supreme Court Justice as a dissenter or someone who always stood out. And one of the things that I often say to students is, why blend in when you were born to stand out? I say that because that's what makes me think of the Homes team. We have a team that truly stands out, and the second word of their mission is collaboration. And we're going to collaborate to build, and then they go from there, but they have taken collaboration to such another level. The teacher efficacy, the co-planning, co-teaching solidarity. So I just want to share that appreciation, applause. I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Fittinger, who is back there as well, another part of the team. And while I'm shouting out the team, I might as well shout out Ms. Cavan and Ms. Dillard and Mr. Rebular, just the entire Homes 3rd through, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade team. So with no further ado, let's hear from Homes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zaid, for setting that context. We want to also talk a little bit about what was their positive outlier data, and I have to be transparent with you, when I came into the research department, one of my first tasks was to prepare to give end-of-the-year summit of data, and something that stood out to me immediately was that there was this school that was having just positive data, and it was trending, and I remember having a conversation with Brian, saying, hey, you know, Homes has something going on because our data is trending in this way. So it has been one of our tasks in the research department to find an opportunity, and today is that opportunity to hear about their practices, because we wanted to share it with the larger community. So thank you for being here. And as I mentioned with the Hughes team, I'd like to have this conversation and use your first name. So Tammy, if you want to call me Madrigal, we take it back to the Barton Elementary days, you can call me Madrigal, same with Marissa, and Lori, of course, Lori and I go way back. Lori was actually my principal when I was starting out as an administrator, so learned a lot from Lori. So let's start and talk a little bit about that positive outlier data. We see that in 4th and 5th grade, we've seen double than the percentage of students starting that have met that mid or above grade level in Diagnostic 1 this year compared to last year. And as I mentioned, this data has been trending, not just this year, but we've seen that in, in not only I-ready data, we've, we've also seen it in other district assessments, that the Homes team has some positive outlier data. And so when we look at, just reading Diagnostic, if we can go to the next slide, when we look at the grades, so we called out some of the, the specific grades where we saw some reductions in the percentage of students that were two or more grade levels below, we saw a reduction in almost every grade level, and, you know, some more than others. And I think it's important to note that, again, in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, overall, we're seeing that, you know, there are some, some data points that are trending in a very positive way. This data was shared at our November meeting, so more information around those data points can be referenced to that board meeting. So let's talk about our qualitative data. So we talked about facilitating adult learning and development, and I think for the Homes team, something that stood out to our team was really around the collective efficacy that Mr. Zaid mentioned, and the way in which you, as a team, have this, like, curiosity around, like, the why. So talk to me about how your, your team has been using data that we provide, and then what do you do after you receive that data?
So first of all, we had to have a mind shift. We changed what we do to what we know, and then we align our actions with what we know. So at the end of the year, especially the end of the year, but throughout the year, we do a data dig, where we pick the data apart. So we look at, like, the Poll Survey, Core Survey, I-Ready, S-Back, our observations, our PDSA cycle of improvement, attendance, we look at small group versus big group, SEL all day, LPAC, our unit assessments, student tasks. So we look at everything, and then we look at the trends and what we see, and then the gaps, what's missing. And then we choose a book, and because we center, our classrooms are identity-centered, and we teach black and brown, that's our focus, students, black and brown students, we choose books that will lend itself to our identity-centered classrooms. And so I think you can see some of the books up there that we've chosen. And then we do a book study over the summer, and then in the fall, we also choose another book so that we can work through the book in the fall with each other. Yeah, we're a data, data-driven decision-making team. We know that assessments, middle-class white students, and we are teaching black and brown students. So that means that we have to look for real-world experiences and books and the research that lends itself to the students that we're teaching and that we serve.
So you shared something regarding the real-world experiences, and I don't know, Marissa or Lori, you want to speak to those real-world experiences? I know our team had an opportunity to hear about those experiences. Can you share a little bit about, what does that look like? When you talk about real-world experiences, are you talking about those, you're bringing those experiences in, are they in your community? If you can share some examples.
Well, based on our readings and data dig that we do and the research, that's my part, this is my part. And what we know, again, we try to align our actions with that. So first, we identify the barriers, right? And we try to get rid of the barriers, making sure all their needs are met, Maslow's hierarchy needs are met. And the first thing that we do to create real-world experience is create a physical environment that's conducive to learning. So we are very intentional in the way furniture is placed, placement of furniture, there's no teacher desk, there's no teacher center, everything is around the student and it's student-centered, natural collaborations, comfortable furniture where they feel safe, shoes too tight, take them off, things like that. So we want to make sure they first have the opportunity to feel safe in the environment. Opportunity spaces, those would be considered break spaces, but we call them opportunity spaces, and that's your opportunity, if it's not going well, to get your life right, and you're still going to work, and then you'll come back together. So there's a space in the classroom, and students are able to freely walk and do and make decisions. So first, the physical environment is very, very important for us. And then we look at different models of instruction that will meet our students' needs. And more and more, we're moving more toward the inquiry-based learning for all subject areas, not just, you know, science, but all subject areas for math. And so what we do is, we take our structure of the inquiry-based models, we look at everything from a historical point of view. So that means our students will be able to see themselves in no matter what subject area, and be able to feel as though they had, their people have had a part in the development of, whether it's an invention or whatever it is. So again, what we know, we try to align our actions with that. So with this inquiry-based problem-solving skills, critical thinking skills, it goes along with guided struggle, and so that's what we practice guided struggle, because we know our students, if they don't struggle, just because we know if we don't struggle, we don't have meaning, meaning of the world around us. So we practice guided struggle, and it's building resilience in our kids. And we hope that they'll have the capacity to face future challenges. So COVID came, then there might be another COVID. So we try to build that and instill that in our kiddos. So the learning, the experiences, one thing that we're really focused on is place-based learning. You may know that as a field trip, but it is not a field trip, it is place-based learning. So for example, we have taken our kids to Target. Target has shut down a whole part of the store, so we were learning decimals and rounding, and so they invited us in, and the kids got to shop, they actually got to learn from the employees, they got to go through the checkout. We've gone to Costco, same thing with Costco, they opened their arms to us when we were learning fractions, they took us all behind the scenes. The mall, you know, we're right by Liquid Mall, Sees Candies. So we take those place-based learning experiences along with the unit experiences from the unit guides, and we just kind of mesh those together, because what we know about our kids is that they need the actual experience, right? The experience breeds the vocabulary, they feel more comfortable, they're able to come back and say, oh, this is why we're doing this. So place-based learning, that's real big for us. For example, we read the book Wild Robot, then we went to see the movie Wild Robot, then we come back, and then we compare and contrast the movie to the book. Our inquiries are culture-rich, stimulating, I think, okay, not on that one. I thought the Filipino cabayan feast was up there. I gave an example of the Thanksgiving. We have an ambassador leadership club after school, that's an experience where they practice leadership for the school. We have a stomology program after school, where college and career readiness. We also invite, like, one day I was teaching perimeter, and I think the Long Beach LUSD guy was fixing our door, and he heard me, and he came right on in and started teaching the lesson about perimeter and area. So it was real-world, yeah. It was real-world experience. We invited an architect in when we were doing geometry, where the kid, they get to actually ask questions and do, and so we invite the community in, we go out into the community, and... And so, we invite the community in, we go out into the community, and yeah, and I have examples if you need.
Thank you. That actually helps me think about something that you shared in regards to how the Holmes team views collaboration and the importance of thinking about the student in regards to like supporting the whole child. So, what insights could you share that can help us understand like your collaboration structures with keeping in mind the whole child?
So, Ms. Jones had touched upon making sure that we try to remove as many barriers as we can with the students. And so, that wraparound support system just kind of makes sure that we get to know our students on an individual basis and then meeting their needs, whatever they are, based on that data dig, looking at the core survey and the poll survey. So, if that means like bringing in the nurse to deal with glasses or hearing issues, whether that's bringing in the psychologist because we saw some deficits in maybe their social-emotional learning, or the counselor for that matter, if it's intentionally placing them with our intervention specialist who not only serves the kids in an educational capacity, but also meets their social-emotional needs. So, maybe placing them in a group, not necessarily because they need intervention support academically, but they need some support with their social-emotional learning. So, just making sure that we utilize all people on campus to help support the students in all areas that they need.
There was something, though, that you did share earlier about your taking the kids out into the community. You didn't touch about, you didn't touch on this, but you did with our team. And it had to do with getting the staff in the community that the kids live in, and you talked about your business partners. Are there business partners that help support? Because we're talking about collaboration, collaboration, again, community of learners, students, staff, and caregivers. Sometimes your community, your business partners are your caregivers. How do you ensure that they understand the goal and the role of collaboration in their child's learning?
So, okay, I'll start from the collaboration with the teacher and the students, and then I'll move to that bigger understanding of the community. So, the collaboration first starts with the teachers, and we are constantly collaborating. And when we talk about collaborating, it's not necessarily sitting down with the unit guides and saying, we're going to teach this task on this day. It really is having conversations around what do we see our students need and how can we meet those needs? So, we have like a Friday debrief, so like every Friday after school, like we'll sit, we have like lawn chairs outside, so like we'll meet up outside and just kind of like talk about the week, what happened, what went well, what do we need to do that following week, what units do we want to focus on? So, we have a Friday debrief, we have hallway hangs, so like maybe in the morning before school starts, we're like all in the hallways, and we're all talking about, you know, the day and what we had planned. We visit other classrooms, so like we'll do like a classroom drop-in. Like, if we have library, we may go into our colleagues' classrooms and just kind of sit and see what they're doing. And lunchtime, so our lunchtime is always outside on the playground with the kids. So, we have our chairs set out, we're eating, and those who've been to our school site can attest to that. But it really is, it's our way of being and not, it's three o'clock, my duty day is over, I'm not talking about work. You know, we do have boundaries that we set, but it really is a constant way of being and not, and this is just something that we do. So, that's the collaboration that we have set amongst ourselves with three, fourth, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers. And then we have that collaboration with the students. So, the students really are exchanging ideas and learning from each other on a constant basis through these learning experiences and the learning process. So, my students will interact with the fifth grade students, or the third grade students would interact with my students. It really is, we like to call our building the 4,000 building like it's a neighborhood. So, like, my kids know they can go to any one of the teachers in my hallway and get support that they need. They interact with each other as a way to exchange ideas. So, we have different culminating projects, activities, where the students are interacting with each other, whether it's through a meme museum that we do at the beginning of the school year, which is really identity-based for students to share about themselves. And so, all of our classes will snake through or visit each of the other classrooms, and all of the students are sharing about themselves to get to know their larger community within our building. And whether that's bringing in school staff, like our custodians or coachees, office staffs, their office staff, they're always invited into these spaces to participate and interact with the students as well. We also include collaboration with families and parents. So, they're all, anytime we have any sort of culminating activity based on whatever the inquiry that we were investigating over the, you know, a unit of study, families are always invited into those spaces to help participate, or to participate in that celebration to see their child present their learning. We've also invited the history office, the gate office, Dr. Lovett, board members, Board Member Craighead likes to come down, and Brian has popped in. So, Dr. Baker has come and read to our students. So, just inviting the larger system into our schools so that students have an audience to present their learning and know that their learning was meaningful.
So, I'm going to ask you a question, Marissa, that I think has been asked in some of our board meetings or in our student outcome committing meetings, and it has to do with, how do you bring along parents and there was, or caregivers? And there was something that the team shared in our listening sessions that we had that I thought was fascinating as a parent in, of kids in our system. I think I told you, can I be part of this conference? So, can you share a little bit about what you do differently at back-to-school night? Because I think there's power in that practice of back-to-school night as well as parent conferences.
So, we like to include our parents in the process and not speak to them or at them, but include them in the process. And so, for back-to-school night, we try to reimagine what that could look like for parents to understand what the expectations are for their child in that particular grade level. So, we decided, well, we have our students do inquiry, our parents should also participate in that structure as well so they can kind of see what their child is learning and how they're learning it. So, for back-to-school night, we come up with our, the anchor standards for the grade levels, what we feel is most important that the child needs to know by the end of that grade level. And we'll create posters with that anchor standard, and they'll have a task to complete at each of the stations. So, they're with their child. We encourage our families to bring their children with them to back-to-school night because it's not the teacher just talking to the parents. This really is a community effort, so we need all stakeholders present. So, parents are required to have discourse with their child. How are they going to help their child meet this anchor standard? So, what does it look like by the end of third grade? What should I expect my child be able to do? What does that writing look like? What type of text, what level of reading should they be able to attain? And so, the parents are having discourse with their child. Oh, so this is what's expected in third grade, how might I be able to help you? What do you need from me? And then they will jot down on the poster paper their buy-in on their support that they're going to give their child for that year.
And then the parents go up. And then the parents, they have a task of walking around and reading all of the posters. So, it's on big poster paper where they're engaging with examples of texts, books, the manipulatives for, I think I gave them a task for math, that was a real-world task. And then they walk around, and then they have to find three things or star, put a heart by maybe a couple of different things they might try at home. But I did, like, I heard, and then we just facilitate, but a parent was saying how, this was fractions last year in fourth grade. Okay, so then you need to be in the kitchen with me cooking. So, immediately, that was her way of being able to help. And it was our, it's our way of saying, okay, who works all day? Who is available during the day? Who does not understand or maybe doesn't get what, but they can help in a different way? So, walking, they got to choose the way that they would help their child at home, giving us the information of, okay, now we know, so when the child comes to us, we know how to serve them.
And, you know, I appreciate you sharing those specific examples because as we're thinking about our Vision 2035 and what could we reimagine, what structures? This is a great example of things that are happening in our system already, and we want to be able to uplift that work so that as our community is thinking about that reimagining, we're doing some of this work, and this is a great opportunity for you to share, and also that it's very much something that we can do. And it's important, we've had conversations about including, how do you include caregivers? And you also spoke about your multilingual learners. We asked, like, how do you ensure that parents that English is not their first language? How are they part of this? And that was the example, you get them involved in a hands-on. So, thank you for sharing, that's very powerful. So, we're going to transition into culturally responsive leadership because like the Hughes team, you shared some really insightful lived experiences as it pertains to leadership. And I know Lori, you haven't had a chance to share a little bit about your story, but I think, you know, the, something that resonated with our team was that, for Pilad, she's, this is year two, for you, this is year seven. Did I get that right? Okay. So, tell me a little bit about your journey at Holmes in that timeframe that you've been.
So, yes, year seven, and I look forward to many, many more. Whenever anyone says, oh, what year is this for you? You know, you want to say it quietly because you never know if that means that it's going to be time for a change. But this is really what's important about having time, that you can really, truly work on the growth and development, and you can really see it. So, first of all, I always feel like we kind of have to toss out the COVID years because that kind of really stopped the train that we had going. So, one of our books was a wild card, and there was a conference that we sent some of our teachers to. They came back super excited, shared with our team. And the whole concept is, we all have to teach the standards, but how you do it is up to you. So, what joy, what engagement, what excitement are you going to bring into your classroom to get your students inspired to learn? And so, we were changing up spaces, we were doing all of these things. We were talking about culturally relevant before it was relevant to talk about culturally relevant. You know, so really like taking those things into consideration with our kiddos. But one of the things that we were talking about is the time it takes to build trust. You know, anyone who's a new principal, you know, there's always that new principal workshop, you know? And there's always these things that you're coming in with, and you know, you're trying to learn about your staff, your staff is trying to learn about you and anything that they might have heard. So, you're trying to build this trust with one another. And when you get that train rolling, then you know what your space is as a leader because you know your staff, you know their heart for kids, you know their intentions, so you can get behind supporting the things that they want to do and allow them to be able to take risks, to think outside of the box, to bring those experiences in, to take those students out. You, and that all takes time, and it doesn't happen in one year, two year. And sometimes, you know, you get to maybe four years when you really start feeling it all clicking and working. Also, we spend a lot of time working on the vision that you referenced, that collaborating around that, our mission. What is it that we want for our kids? We are building leaders of tomorrow. What does that look like? What do we have to instill in them today for that to happen? And so, when you look at the work that's being done, bringing in those social justice standards and, you know, really taking not just this one little piece of learning, it has to be expanded. It has to be bigger than just whatever it is that's in the textbook. And so, I have learned to make sure that I'm providing space, that I'm providing time, that I really am giving them opportunity outside of their time that they collaborate naturally on their own, but I'm also providing that grade-level time and that space for them as well.
Well, I think, you know, you've given us a lot to think about in terms of culturally responsive leadership. And I think one thing that you mentioned right now is, and it's been a theme for both schools, which is really like building relationships, that trust and making sure like you know who you are in service of as well as who is part of the learning journey with you and alongside you, not that one person knows all the information. And that was an ongoing conversation in our listening sessions. So, I'm going to leave you with the last two questions, and perhaps the team has had a chance to reflect and think about these two questions. But what is a Holmes team most proud of? And you kind of touched a little bit on what are your aspirations for your Holmes community of learners? So, take a moment to think, and that can be collective response, or one person could take the lead on that.
So, we are really proud, well, our kids come with quite a few barriers. And so, we are pretty proud of especially our black and brown kiddos. Maybe on paper, it doesn't look like we have black and brown kids, but they are if you see them in the seats. And they love coming to school, they love learning. And whatever challenges we give them, they rise to the occasion. We're very proud in the fact that, I mean, you know, from our unhoused to food insecurities, we've taught them how to ask for breakfast if they come two minutes late and can't have breakfast. We're able to take them place-based learning out into the community, community. And I always think, like, would our kids buy a ticket to be in our classrooms? And if we say yes, then I like, we've done what we were supposed to do. So, we're really proud of the fact that they come to school, they want to come to school. So, that's one thing that I think that our team is most proud of, and the fact that we work together. What, her student is my student, like, all of her students are all of our students. And the kids know that, the fact we eat lunch on the playground with them every day. They can just come to any of us, we speak the same language. So, we are really proud of that, and the fact that our classrooms are safe spaces for our kiddos. That's very important as well.
And I just wanted to add, I think that our team does a, seeing our students as little humans and not, we let them be who they are, in whatever sense that means.
Thank you. I would like to add, also, our families, our staff, our kids, like, that's something that I'm proud of. So, right now, we have our, our Holmes Football Bowl is going on right now. So, that's why some of our team is in here, Mr. Redular heads that up. And if you were there right now, you would see parents with their lawn chairs out cheering their kids on. You would see a food truck serving food that's one of our families. So, when we talk about that, one of the things that we wanted to create is a business directory of our families and supporting them, so different events, different families will, you know, sell food or whatever it is, whatever services that they provide. So, that is huge for us. When we say community, that is what we mean. When Tammy was referencing where the kids go for their place-based learning, that's all in our community. We're right there, if you don't know where we are, we're like behind the Michaels and Hobby Lobby by Lakewood. So, like, that, that's where we want to go. We want to make sure that we are honoring our community and serving our community, and so, that's what we are proud of.
And they see themselves in the community, yes.
Aspirations for your kiddos? I know you shared your developing leaders. What type of leaders do, are you, when you envision a student leader becoming an adult leader, based on the work that you're doing, what do you envision that to be?
Well, we want our kiddos to become perpetual learners, period. Just, it doesn't matter the position you're in as a leader, just that applying what you know, asking those questions to improve their life and the life of others, and that's what we want.
So, two quick things. First of all, I would absolutely buy a ticket if I was a student to be in your classroom, for sure. I'd definitely do that. And second of all, we're over, but I'm going to get myself in a little bit of trouble, and we're going to go a little even over more because we're not going to let you go without asking some additional questions. So, I'm going to ask again one more time, let's take just a couple of minutes, looking at especially those how questions on the right-hand side. Let's take just a couple of minutes, uh, looking at especially those how questions on the right-hand side. And our board members who haven't gotten a chance yet, especially, uh, Board Member Craighead, President, you have, uh, they're in your area. So we need to get a really good question from you. So I'm going to give you two minutes to work with your partner to generate that great question.
And then within our vision statement that we co-create with our kids, all of that is part of it and part of the community. So they are, it's like they're in school to get ready. Like we're ready to take off. Yeah. Yeah. So it's embedded.
And then just to piggyback off of that, so we try to get our students to see themselves not just as a fourth grader or a nine-year-old. What, what do you see yourself like in the sixth grade, the seventh grade? You're going to be in high school eventually. What do you plan on? So getting them to see those short and long-term goals. So we are big on goal, uh, setting with our students. Not only just what do you plan to accomplish this year? What do you plan to accomplish in the future? So getting them to see beyond just themselves in this moment.
That's great. Just to try to spread the wealth, Mr. Otto, is there a question you would like to ask? Or would you like to give your time to one of your colleagues here?
I have a perfect question for you, Mr. Otto. Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. So, uh, doing it before it was called, whatever we're calling it now. So there's a whole area of educational research around funds of knowledge, right? What you all are doing and have been doing, uh, is asset-based, values-based. Students and communities bring in knowledge. So you all reference, uh, knowledge producers and the impact and the power that that has for communities that have been historically marginalized and disempowered, right? So, uh, given that we have reimagined, looking to the OCIPD guru, uh, here, and Dr. Baker, you and I have talked about this. I, I want to call out the obvious that may not be as obvious. We have black educational leaders here in Long Beach, right? In our schools. So when we talk about culturally relevant pedagogy, culturally sustaining pedagogy, culturally affirming pedagogy, we have those assets, those gifts, those talents, that knowledge here. Do what they're doing. Other schools in Long Beach, do what they're doing. Teachers and counselors and social workers in Long Beach. I think that needs to be called out, right? I think the power of the qualitative data I referenced it is the results speak for themselves, right? And I don't want to, I don't want to sound as if I'm, I'm being dismissive of this because I think it's powerful. But this isn't just about black and brown students. This is about our students with disabilities, uh, right? This is about our LGBTQ plus, uh, students. So, so, a- and it, it works beautifully with black and brown students, but the place-based learning, the funds of knowledge, the asset-based, uh, the recipe that's being done in the kitchen in someone's house, right? That's what we mean by asset-based, culturally affirming, culturally sustaining. So, hey, LBUSD and any other district that's interested, do that, right? So from an OCIPD framework of reimagining, uh, that's how, what, that's what I envision in our professional development. Previous group from Hughes talked about hanging out at lunch, uh, like, like, like you all do, like, um, and, and look, I'm all for compensating our wonderful educators. You must be compensated. I'm not saying go do OC, you know, go, go do professional development classes. But part of acknowledging the community cultural wealth model in our communities, in our surrounding communities, whatever community we're talking about. Uh, and I'm here, I'm talking about central Long Beach and downtown. Is also acknowledging the knowledge at the school. Whether it's seven years or in your first year. And so I, I don't want that to be lost on our communities today. If we're calling in parents, uh, we, I think parents from other schools, students from other schools need to know what's going on at schools like, you know, in this case, Holmes, but it could have been Hughes. Because without that, without lifting this up, it continues to be a subtract, subtractive deficit-based assumptions about these, uh, you know, a small school and what can be done, uh, right? But we're talking about educational disparate outcomes across our district. This isn't specific. Yeah, black students at Wilson, guess what? They're the ones that are underperforming, quote-unquote, uh, right? Doesn't matter where Wilson is at. We're still talking about our students that are yet to be cert. So I don't want that to be, uh, it's not a question, Mr. Moss, because it's, we need to hear more of that. We need to highlight more of that. We need to have more professional development around more of that. We need, and it not just for the community at that school. Props to you, props, I mean, again, like, big, thank you.
It's funny, interesting you say that. I was actually thinking, i- if, if I were a principal at a school, an upcoming Thursday faculty meeting, would be watching the video of this conversation that we just had. So for other principals out there, maybe that's an idea for them, right? The other thing I'll, I'll say, um, and I'll, I'm going to bring in one of questions that Mr. Millen and I talked about. So you get, you almost get two here because you're sitting next to me. I would love to, and this goes for the, the Hughes team as well, um, for us to come and talk to you about, we know what you're doing that's awesome, but what I'd like to know is how can we help to operationalize what you're doing in other places? What can we, from your perspective as a teacher, what can we do with other teachers to encourage some of these same practices? So not for today, we're definitely over time, but know that we're, we're coming back. And we're going to ask you, how do we make this not by chance, that people have the great chance to have you as a teacher, but by design in our district, that this is happening in every, every school and every classroom? So one more time, let's hear it for both of these teams. Veronica, you and your team, thank you for doing such a great job of facilitating this. And Chris Itzen, your team, I apologize for giving you less time to get ready for the next meeting. Uh, President Craighead, anything you'd like to add in closing or?
Thank you. And it was just so evident, um, the, between the, uh, both teams that the, the kids are your north star. You, you treat the school communities like family and the kids are responding to that. So thank you.